Worked revenue.
All right. Good evening. Welcome. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Uh, I will call the meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners to order. And we will start with the adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes, suggestions in the agenda? All right. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner votes. Second? Commissioner Farrell, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Which carries? Up first is the budget schedule.
Do I need to get up or can I just?
Yeah, you don't have to get up. Just get near a mic.
Um, so the budget schedule, we're going to, um, between January, February, I'm going to be sending out all the spreadsheets to the department heads for them to fill out and return to us, and then we'll have internal discussions. Um, the Board of Commissioners Budget Retreat is, um, I think it's on the agenda for this meeting to be changed to March thirty first instead of April second. Um, and then the plan would be to have the budget hearing, the first budget hearing, uh, May twelfth, and then we could keep that open, um, until budget adoption June ninth.
Any questions on that? And we do have the, the day change on the upcoming meeting, so. Okay, uh, discussion of new budget requests for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
All right, to get an idea of where we're going, we just wanted to see where, uh, we've been. So real quick, we'll go through what we're working on now and our accomplishments. All right, so Community House, uh, about four hundred and fifty thousand, fifty left to do landscaping, the parking lot across the street. There's some money in the budget, uh, or the CIP for next year, um, just in case there's a few small things that we want to get done in addition. If y'all have questions, just let me know. Um, a plan, tennis courts, those look really good. People love them. That's done.
You have a question about the community house?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the roof was leaking at one point. Uh, I know it was patched. Is that right?
The, we don't know if the roof was leaking as bad as it was prior to the work being done, but a, uh, exhaust pipe was put through for the bathrooms, the new bathrooms that were installed.
That's where it was come from.
Yep. Our roofer that looked at it said that it wasn't patched back properly, and that's why all the water was coming in. And it was coming in right on the wall where the exhaust line was, so.
What is, what is the age of the roof? Just? Is it original? Not original, my God.
Twenty-two, twenty-three years, eighteen years. It's, I can't recall exactly, but it, it isn't quite to the, to the life of the roof. We were expecting to probably try to replace that next year or the year after.
Okay, and that would, that would be reflected then in this budget or next year's budget?
Next year. We wanted to handle that ourselves to save ourselves the eight percent addition, uh, with a contractor. I save money. Tennis courts, um, we have for the tennis courts and the basketball courts, future lighting and next year's CIP. It is a considerable expense, so that's, that may be something that's kicked down the road a little bit because the lights that are there work. Um, we just wanted to upgrade them. Playground improvements, uh, that's been a big hit. The next park with Rock Ridge is paving the drive for Rock Ridge. Uh, I believe that's slated for next week or the week after. We had some leftover money from the playground installation at Rock Ridge, so we moved that to the driveway. We were spending about twenty thousand a year to put rock on that road, uh, to pave it seventy-two thousand, so less than a four-year ROI, so we think that's a smart move. Louis Freeman, we received the sketches today, uh, for the kind of redesign of that. Hobbs Architect has that contract and they're working through some of those things. I'd imagine we would bring a, a design to you all for approval prior to moving forward, uh, but Katie and I, we literally just got that today. Any questions there? All right. Uh, Mary Hayes bathrooms are done. We just have to install the Wi-Fi, so then we can get the automatic locking doors. Our hope is to have all of that finalized by the end of January. Getting Wi-Fi to that building has been an added problem, so we're working on it. The skate park has started. Uh, town employees are working with contractors to do Dirt Hall to Diane Street to save some money. Um, so they're doing the cut right now, so you can drive by there and see them working on that. And then the baseball lights, the other twenty-five thousand out of that seventy is, uh, in partnership with East Chatham Little League to put new baseball lights on that baseball field that the county is giving us once the paperwork is final. And you should have an agreement, I'm hoping in January, with East Chatham Little League.
You say your paperwork through the county was finished?
We, they are working on it.
Okay.
Uh, so this was in the CIP for last year, and I don't think that it got included, so this is my mistake for including this, but we are likely going to move away from having park reserve funds and then just allocate those to actual individual parks with actual goals and action items.
What's the advantage?
So we can show specifically what we're spending the money on, so you all can see that we're accomplishing the goals that you specifically want to see us accomplish. Public Works Building, that is in, the draft plan should be in hand this month. And I think we've got the floor plan. We're just waiting on the electrical. And then once we have that, uh, we're going to shoot that to the county to get some comments, to make sure everything is, is, uh, he's crossed, eyes dotted, so then we can move forward with the process first of the year.
Are we replacing this building?
You're going to take off the skin, keep the skeleton, uh, new skin insulation, interior, uh, one of the bays will be, uh, converted into more office space. And if y'all want to see those plans, I can shoot them out to you once we have.
Thank you. You already sent them out a while back.
The preliminary plans.
Yeah.
And then the, I believe we have solved the septic tank issue. So we learned there was a septic tank when we started doing, uh, the design, so.
When you say resolved the issue, what was the issue?
It stopped working. Actually, that, let me back up. That's how we realized we had a septic tank because the bathrooms stopped working, so I believe those are fixed now.
They are.
Yep. Good.
Never knows what's underground.
Yeah. Uh, street paving, pretty standard. We did Thompson Street and some other repairs, so we'll keep, uh, don't know which streets are slated for next fiscal year. If you'd like to know, just give me a shout. Uh, so the L I, the LOIs, letter of the interest from the engineers have been received. We got those today. Hopefully, we'll pick an engineer to move forward with that, um, next week, and then we can start the design, uh, and engineering for that sidewalk project.
I have one question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, since they're planning, yes, that should be the truck route.
Yes, ma'am.
So would we still want to, are we going to do the sidewalks after they expand the truck route or?
They're not. They won't be expanding it. They're just moving the truck route to that road.
So will they be widening that road?
I don't think so. Not in the short term.
Okay.
And this sidewalk, this is probably the, the ill-timed, but how far up is it going to go on eighty-seven?
It'll go from Town Lake Park all the way to Pittsburgh Elementary School Road.
Okay, okay.
And we have just gotten funded, so it's our match plus the DOT match or DOT funding. So we don't even know what the design is going to look like yet. We still haven't picked our engineer.
Are there plans of adding a sidewalk northbound, well, on the, on the east side of eighty-seven, north of Highway six, uh, Business sixty-four? Like past, uh, public library and then up to?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oakwood Drive.
That's right. We have that section, I believe, on the community change or raise. We, we think the raise grant that we, we are hopefully to get awarded for one point five, point three, one point two, um, has us putting, doing the design work for sidewalks and greenways all over town, a lot of which were identified in the Parks and Rec Master Plan from a couple of years back. Uh, but I believe that section was, if it wasn't, it was included in the, um, nineteen million dollar grant that Colby put together for community change that we just submitted, uh, last week. So that, that is on our, on our plans. So typo here, that's two hundred and fifty thousand, um, for Oakwood Drive. That is, design is in progress, permitting is in the process. Hopefully, we'll be able to bid that out in the next two, three months. It is probably, uh, important to mention that depending on where Oakwood Drive comes in bid-wise, we've, we've put a little bit of money in for next fiscal year, I want to say sixty thousand, to put the project at three-ten, just depending on how the bid comes in. We just want to kind of plan for that. Um, if it comes in way over, we've had some discussions about going back to Golden Leaf to then reassign the money for the culvert at, uh, Pittsburgh Elementary School Road to this project. Cause the Pittsburgh Elementary School Road, Road Culvert Project is about six hundred thousand was the last bid we got, and we only had two hundred and fifty. So that is in your CIP for next year, but we do need to decide, or you all need to decide if that is a priority you're interested in because that section of road is also included in the raise and, uh, community change. So if we are funded both of those, then that problem will take care of itself.
And, uh, if you were on your staff, uh, since, actually, now I know the answer to my question. Heather, do you recall how much we spent to first repair Pittsburgh Elementary School Road, uh, culvert?
Um, it was not that much because we did the sort of quick repair, patch repair. Um, so what we ended up spending more on was the fact that we had them design the, the culvert replacement project, so we spent more on that. I think we only spent forty thousand maybe to patch it, and then, but we spent probably seventy-five thousand for the design work that we, and the engineering that we had.
Design.
Yes. And it might have actually even been potentially more than that, but I can, I can get you the numbers, yeah. So.
I'm mindful of the news tonight from Carboro. If you saw the New York Times. Yes, you didn't.
Uh, Duke Energy?
Yes. Those are climate-related damages.
So that would be a wait and see?
I'm not suggesting that. I don't know.
Okay.
Document.
I got you, got you.
Like, like our PFAS damages. Okay.
I didn't hear any of that. I'm not, I'm not what you're talking about. I didn't hear anything.
So, uh, town of Carboro, North Carolina has filed suit against Duke Energy for damages that they've incurred to infrastructure and having to replace infrastructure more quickly because of extreme weather events. The loss of our culvert was clearly an extreme weather event. Um, and so I'm simply suggesting that we continue carefully documenting all expenses related, related to extreme weather events.
And we have that all, and we, we keep that longer than we keep anything else because it's in a project fund.
Yep.
Thank you.
Because we, we just made a minor repair to that after the last hurricane. About ten thousand dollars, uh, for a sinkhole reform. But there's your downtown lighting for Sanford Road that you all approved a couple of months ago. Um, bike engineering is finalized in design and they'll send out the DOT for encouragement. Shorty is working on his building.
All those cookies?
What those are.
The, the funding is for the station, not the cookies.
Okay, well, those are expensive cookies.
It's for the little car.
Keep it in a cookie can.
Right. So I just wanted to go over kind of what we had accomplished, uh, the last fiscal year, or what we're still working on, uh, that's budgeted and allocated. I feel like hats off to, to staff because that's a lot of stuff.
Especially the community house. I know, I know, I know how, uh, challenging that was, so hats off to this.
A bit more to go, but we'll get there. We did finally receive the agreement from Century Link to utilize that parking lot.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll have that open in the springtime.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Uh, move to staff plan. So this is, uh, obviously in big bold letters draft, uh, but with kind of as the town moves forward with all the growth, I think there's kind of a slight misconception that the town is bringing in a lot of revenue. And obviously, we're lagging a year or two behind the growth that is, that's happening, um, with the revenue that's coming in. But we, I did want to provide some type of glimpse into the future of where we might be from a staffing level because every staff member, you can pretty much count as about a hundred thousand dollars when you take salary, um, health insurance, all of those different benefits, because the town does offer a great benefit package. So as you see there, ten thousand population, that, that could be within the next five years, could be seven. I doubt it'd be less than five, uh, but five to seven years. So as we're looking at what kind of projects we want to take on, whether it's building a, a large park or a police station or whatever it might be, um, I, I just want us to, to be cognizant of what the organization growth is going to look like and how much that's going to cost. Um, so in this scenario, you, you could see anywhere between seven hundred and a million dollars in extra employee cost year over year. Obviously, we would do as much as we could to manage that cost or mitigate that cost, making sure we hire the right people and as efficient as we can. Uh, but again, just wanted to give you kind of an overview of what the town organization may look like. And some of that's going to be dependent upon who and how we hire and then what the, uh, priorities of the board are. So I don't want to get too much into that, but just want to give you an idea of what it could look like. Any questions there?
What is our, uh, informant now?
Fifty.
To employ, not?
Fifty, fifty employees, roughly. And you've got, I want to say at the moment, twenty-seven or twenty-eight in the fire department. But when they bring on their new, their new folks that are into training, I want to say they'll go to thirty-five. So we're, if you count the fire department because they are a contract of us, that's about eighty-five people. And from a budget standpoint, looking at the fire department, we pay about half. At CIP, we have the, on Excel sheet, that's kind of hard to look at. Um, so I've kind of put it into a different format in form of a memo. So these are just items that, that I've looked at with the department heads and what they see that we might need to do for next year. Um, I will run through these. If you have questions, just, just shout or raise your hand, but, um, a little bit of money to, just in case we need something at the community house. There's your McLennan Park Lighting. Uh, Katie has already, uh, bid all that stuff out. Baseball lights improvements with the new baseball lights. Uh, Commissioner Farrell did a heck of a job raising some money for those lights. The agreement is looking at with the town providing the payment, the rest of the, uh, the payment for those lights over five years, which is going to be around twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So that would be our contribution to support Little League Baseball in Pittsburgh with East Chatham Little League. Uh, and then East Chatham has got some other projects they're going to do, uh, at their own expense. Uh, Mary Hayes Barber Homes Park Improvements, uh, looking at some playground upgrades over there. Um, East Street Beautification, Robeson Creek Park. That is to kind of do, that fifty thousand is probably put like a storage shed or something, so we can store a tractor, uh, to kind of keep that in mode. It'll be a while before we can fully kind of activate that park, but we wanted to go ahead and get some trails mode and kind of start letting people utilize that seventy-two acres. A quarter million for playground improvements, fifty thousand for Diane Street in case there's something that we miss. Um, annual street resurfacing. You notice that it's at one forty? Technically, it's at, it's two hundred, but I took sixty out of that two hundred and moved that to, uh, Oakwood Drive. That's where I kind of pulled the, the extra funding in case we need something. Hundred and sixty for the widening project downtown streetscape. That's just our design portion that we owe DOT. Five oh six for the eighty-seven sidewalk. That's grant. Uh, four oh eight for Salisbury Street sidewalks, uh, three hundred and twenty of that's grant. We, we had heard some interest in improving some of the pedestrian crosswalks, ADA improvements around town, so Kent wanted to add fifty thousand, so that's what that's for. We're hoping to try to include that in the budget year over year, so we can start to make those improvements, so it doesn't come out of our, uh, street paving.
That include one we discussed a few weeks ago, um, near McLennan, something on?
East and West Street, right?
Street.
So Theresa will give you all our presentation on STIP at your, uh, meeting on Monday. And the number one project for our little area is that project, which I believe is five crosswalks on East and Western.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought we were trying to do it in-house, but.
Because it's the, the number one STIP project, I'd like to give us a couple of years to see if DOT will pay for it, and then if they won't, if you all want to proceed, we can. There's your sixty thousand for Oakwood Drive. Uh, there's Pittsburgh Elementary School Culvert. Uh, I think that's kind of a priority discussion, figuring out when money gets tight, is that one of the first ones I cut? And then we talked to, um, Golden Leaf, and then radios, this is for some new radios for the police, as well as a, is it low frequency system for, yeah, for, yeah, for Public Works. Uh, I, I'm used to Public Works and utility staff having radios in their trucks so they can communicate without having to call their cell phone. Uh, we don't have any of that, so we kind of want to put in some type of system where they can better communicate with each other without having to use a cell phone. I miss anything on that one? Okay. And then we get into twenty-seven, uh, same with McLennan, continuing to make, uh, improvements at Mary Hayes, East Street Beautification, Night Farm Park upgrades, seven hundred thousand. Uh, we are looking to apply for a part of the grant in May of next year. And that will be probably for a quarter million, uh, but the total project cost likely be about seven hundred. And y'all have seen those renderings for that re-envisioning. The town.
Oh, sorry. The, the grant shown on that is the one we're going to apply for, not receive.
Correct.
Correct.
Uh, Town Lake Park, uh, walk and trail signage and improving the Diane Street entrance. And Robeson Creek Park, two point five million. Uh, we're hoping to start the design process for Robeson Creek Park. Um, and then you all will, part of that will be naming too. I don't know if you want to call it the Robeson Creek Park or come up with something else. Um, but right now, that's what we got it listed as. So two point five, that number is likely to be higher than that, but we, we just don't have a quote, so, um, continuing to put in playground improvements. Uh, Diane Street is for, I think, an additional building because there is some equipment purchasing in the next two years that would, um, require that. Trying to give, uh, Shorty some more money for the police station improvements, street resurfacing. Uh, there's your grant for the widening for the streetscape project. That money has to be spent in three years. Um, we're now working with DOT to try to figure out what the timeline is going to be because the streetscape section is supposed to happen after we're supposed to have the money spent. So we are trying to work on a solution. And it may involve the town requesting from DOT that the town do the streetscape section, section ourselves. We fast-track it and then we ask for reimbursement at a later date. And, uh, pedestrian crossings. And then design number thirteen, fire station, that is just the design work. Yes. Fire stations are running about anywhere from thirty-five to fifty-five dollars a square foot for design. Just for design. Uh, yes, scary.
Possibly we can get some design work from Apex or Sanford that is a station that we really like.
Yeah. We came to borrow somebody else's design. The site, site considerations are critical, but.
We're have to be very careful in what I say, but, um, we attempted that and every fire department is going to have different expectations of what their station is. And so even if you can find the box or the envelope that works, you're still going to reconfigure the entire inside. So we had actually attempted that and the Sanford station, it, it was just going to have to be reconfigured inside and it didn't make a lot of sense. Um, we also wanted to try to look at design build, so we can have a firm to protect the design and our, our budget. Um, just, I feel like too often you, you tell a firm, we have five million dollars. You get this nice, pretty designs that you like, that everybody loves. You bid it out and it costs eight million dollars. Um, so we're also looking at the design build option, so we can make sure that through that process, someone is watching, has our back on making sure that what is designed is going to cost the amount of money we have to spend. We also need to figure out who's going to own it. Um, how that all works. So a lot of questions. But luckily, we have a good year and a half run up to, hopefully to design to figure it out. And you all should see the parcel where the fire station is being proposed. You all should see that in the next two or three months for, for a conditional zone. But if you see a fire station that you like, those words out, we'll look at the plans. And also, the goal is not to build a metal building. Right? That's, being that's on East Street, as one of our entrance ways in town, we want to make sure it's a nice, nice building. Uh, there's your vehicles and equipment. Um, some of that can be cut, but most of that is, is stuff we feel like we, we pretty well need. All right, that's.
Um, I have one question of the hook lift truck. Is that a necessary for a town now?
Is not a hundred percent necessary, but we think there's enough cost saving where it'll pay for itself in the short term. Uh, right now, we were using the dumpsters that GFL is providing, and they're coming to pick them up, I think, twice a week, which is costing us a pretty decent amount of money. This would allow us to have our own dumpsters and then we haul those to the dump ourselves.
Good.
Not paying GFL. Um, it would also be beneficial if we have construction projects that, that you're leading. We can then take our own construction dumpsters, uh, and save some money there. It just kind of opens up our, our options. Uh, but that's, I don't think that's a, a necessary must for next year, but if, I think if the money's available, it probably would make sense.
So that's a truck to service roll-off dumpsters.
That's correct. Be essentially an efficiency measure.
On this, I noticed that, uh, the wayfinding signage is due fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. Um, I'm, I'm sure that uh, Teresa was in your meetings. I'm just wondering uh, if that can be pushed forward, or I know it was one of the priorities for the vision, downtown vision plan.
It can be pushed forward. We just have to push something else back. But we, we've got a USDA grant that she's looking at now and wayfinding will be probably the lion's share of that application. And I think it's due in a
Okay.
A month. She, she's having conversations with USDA now on the application parameters and kind of what our scope should be to score well, so she's working through that now.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So next is the, uh, priorities discussion. So for that, we can just go around the table. Richard Farrell, do you like to start?
Really don't have any, uh, outstanding plans. I'll pass right now.
Fully?
I'd like to pass too. I'm kind of new at this. If you can come back to me.
Sure. Yes.
I'd like to continue the discussion on public art spaces. And each year I get reminded that this is the time to talk about the speed bumps at Oakwood Drive. So I'm bringing it up at the appropriate.
Any other?
That's it for me.
Okay. Uh, Richard Ball or Mayor Proton Ball?
Thanks.
Richard Bott?
So, um, our current, uh, set asides for affordable housing are?
One penny.
Um, can you help us understand what that means in terms of annual budget typically?
So if, if one penny produces a hundred and twenty-five thousand, then it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand that we set aside. So I think that was the number for last year. And I want to say at the moment, we've got four hundred?
No, we have like three, like three hundred.
Three hundred? In our affordable housing fund at the moment?
We have three hundred thousand total accumulated.
Um, and it was, uh, what we put in this year was, actually, no, we might have four hundred.
I think it was three hundred plus the one twenty-five for this year, so we're, we're about four twenty-five.
One, one nineteen or two, two is this year.
Okay, one, one nineteen.
What, what's the status of the seven ninety-eight, whatever that was, from the development, um? Oh. What's it called these days?
Eighty-seven.
Over the landing.
Over the landing.
Thank you. So their first payment is due in February with their second payment due this time next year or November of next year. At which point we have collateral of, I think, seven or eight lots. And so if we don't get the payment, we can foreclose on those lots and then the town will. And that was the requirement that we put on them to get the extension.
And do you recall what the total amount was?
Seven eighty-something.
Seven eighty. And this is the accruing, uh, growth of the Affordable Housing Fund is based on one penny from the.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
For the public's benefit.
Um, next year, you're probably looking at one sixty.
I appreciate letting us dwell on this. Uh, it's, it still feels like the, the highest priority. Um, and we've been doing kind of, uh, I think some very, uh, resourceful work on affordable housing projects with the Habitat Humanity. But I don't think we spent any from this fund yet. We still haven't spent any from the Affordable Housing Fund.
Which I think it's a benefit that you have it.
I have to.
Because you've, you've been creating, well, been creating it through conditional zone.
Yep.
And, and no one has yet have, has asked for funding from the town to create these units. It's, I think that's a positive, i- if you want to look at it that way.
Yep. Um, I'm reminded by friends in real estate that, uh, land values in Pittsburgh and Chatham County are likely only going to continue to increase. And that it would be wise of us as a board to start thinking about buying land so that we can control it and its development for affordable housing. Not necessarily that we develop the affordable housing, but that we engage public-private partnerships. Uh, again, so that if the town owns the land, we can control how it's used in future. Uh, it wouldn't exactly be rent control, but it, we could exert more control over inflation than in other situations. I think that, I think that's a rough understanding. I hope I'm accurate in conveying what I'm saying here. So I think that we, uh, ought to continue growing our affordable housing fund. I think that we ought to continue or consider increasing what we're stashing away and, um, I think that we should be looking at land purchases as well.
So who is not looking for land purchases in Pittsburgh? I mean, I think everybody that talks to me is looking for land. But I, you know, you know, anything for land, any land to sell anywhere like this, so, you know, that's just my opinion, but, uh.
So you're saying there's a lot of demand for land?
Yeah, I would say that. I understand.
So do you think the town ought to own land for the purposes of incentivizing?
Ten years ago, it might have been a great idea, but I don't know if we can afford it now, honestly.
Mm-hmm.
It's my opinion too, but.
Yeah. We, we, we talked about in lieu of payments, can you expand on your, your plans about? But.
Yeah. Um, so we relooked at the math and it's in lieu right now is eighty-five per unit. So the, the real delta there is probably a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and fifty-eight. I sent you all the numbers. Um, I, I have a hard time jumping from eighty-five to one fifty-five. Uh, simply from if there's someone, a developer that comes in and that's the request and they see that jump in one year, I don't, I don't want to get into a lawsuit because of that, but, uh, I think the math is solid, but maybe we, we inch that up. Every year, we do a calculation and figure out what that new number is and then change it. And so maybe next year, if the board is okay with it, we, we meet, we go halfway and then adjust the rest later. So maybe one fifteen, one ten next year. Because we, we've had a developer say, all right, I'm going to use your new, uh, incentive. And then I'm just going to write you a check based on your, your fee in lieu. Pretty clever. Uh,
That's right. That's okay. Yeah. Yeah. Can we, I mean, the formula that we use to set that, can we agree on what that formula is? And then that's the number each year? I mean, I think that's what you're saying generally, but, um, the, the change, you know, from current to what it should be, if it's based on a, a formula, I don't know that that matters. If, you know, if we're behind on pay for employees, for example, we do a pay study. That's what it's supposed to be. Uh, so, you know, if, if there's a number that is supposed to be, then we should set it at that number.
And legally, that'd probably be more defensible.
And then each year, we don't have to talk about necessarily what that number is. It's, it's a calculated value that then we could set.
So I'm just going to throw out a suggestion, um, with that in mind. Mr. Mayor, um, perhaps we do, uh, current value plus the HUD valuation rate, the, the increase or decrease of the HUD valuation rate on a yearly basis. Let me, let me try to explain it a little bit better than that. So, uh, every year, the Housing Urban Development comes out with a, uh, uh, a value of, 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 uh, earning wages. And with that wages valuation, it sets the prices for, uh, low-income housing. And that rate either goes up or it goes down. So if we tied it to that, it would be, it would sound fit more fair. As opposed to randomly saying, well, what's the market rate? Uh, maybe we can, or just do a linear five percent increase every year. That, we tie it as something legitimate, it might, it might help.
Agreed. Are you talking about, uh, area median income?
Yeah.
I mean, I think whatever's, you know, staff would propose for that, but, you know, there's data, there are a lot of data out there around these things, and so.
Tie it as something legitimate, please.
Yeah, the only concern about having the formula is then you've got to calculate what your interest rate is. So interest rates are going to drive a large portion of what your mortgage is. So if, if interest rates are low, that's going to change what the number is. And that, that's constantly ebb and flow. So that's, that was my only concern about a formula. We just stick in the ordinance. But it's dependent upon what the, because when I did the calculation a couple of weeks ago, I want to say I used six or seven percent. Uh.
That's kind of random though, isn't it? That's, well, how'd you come up? Just because of that's what the interest rate is this year, you're basing on interest rates.
I just looked at the average interest rate or what the average interest rate was at that moment. I want to say it was seven percent. Which is probably driving a lot of that.
Yeah.
Difference between five and one fifty-eight or whatever it was. Yeah. So we'll work something out.
Just relating what, uh, Commissioner Bond said. Maybe I didn't phrase, phrase that right, but, um, is, is municipality, is that a, a regular position that they do is to buy property and then build and rent? I mean, do any other municipalities do that?
Sir.
Not necessarily rent. It could be held, uh, like in the trust, the community home trust. Is that what it's called? The one out of Orange County?
True.
I like the idea. And to your point, ten years from now, people will say, ten years ago was the time to do it. But how would we identify what to buy?
Question.
Would, would it have to be in the city limits or the ETJ? Because that's, that would be a.
There's some, there's some laws around purchasing property in, in location, but it depends on what you use it for. Yeah.
I would strongly push for in-town and not ETJ. Which is because, uh, we're talking about people that can't necessarily afford a car. And, uh, you can walk to the grocery store if you're in town. You can't if you're out on nine oh two somewhere. So. Again, it's, it's our way to add our density to, uh, people that are earning a living wage.
So. Project with the county, the redesigning of some of the properties on West Street, that's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're looking long-term, buying property in the ETJ makes sense, because in twenty years, someone's going to say, we're glad they bought this property twenty years ago. Um, in terms of like water and sewer, that's a question. Um, and also with the affordable housing element changes to Chatham Park, as it's written now, that's about a five million dollar liability on the town for what they're going to create.
Yeah.
So I, I would, I would recommend that that be our first target is getting that five million put together, so we can be done with that and then move on to other, other options. Because we certainly don't want to be buying land when we have
Liability outstanding.
Two million dollar bill coming for the Comet project when it gets started. Um, so that's, that's my number one concern right now is making sure we have money in the bank to, to pay that bill when it comes. Because Chatham Park is going to be the ones building a lot of this in the short term.
Yeah.
And these other projects, they're going to build more too. Um, but I think five to ten-year outlook of, hey, would this parcel in the ETJ be a good spot later on? I think that's a good thought to have for future use.
So maybe what would be useful is that we kind of memorialize this conversation. Uh, perhaps that's in the budget document. Um, I don't know. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it up to staff to figure that out, but, um, what you've just offered sounds like a good plan is uh, focusing our affordable housing fund on resolving the outstanding liability that's, that we're anticipating with the Comet project. Uh, while also, uh, planning some reasonable, uh, investments. Uh, such as.
Okay.
And, and to be determined by future boards, uh, because we can't encumber or constrain future boards at this moment in time, but, um, I think that would be useful for you to record this conversation, uh, in such a way that we can reflect back and, um, we are, you know, we've already made the commitment of, of establishing an affordable housing fund. But we've had a lot of conversations that come and go about what we're going to do with that. And, um, yeah, I just, I just, I think it's a, it's a really serious matter. And, um, I would like to be able to point to some agreement from this board. Uh, when I talk to folks in town who say, you know, what are you doing about affordable housing? Well, we have the fund and here's what our plan is to spend it. I mean, if we're talking about a. And here's what our plan is to spend it. I mean, if we're talking about a capital improvement plan, then let's, let's work affordable housing into the capital improvement. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Certainly.
And I think if we can highlight. Uh, maybe in a concise way of like what we already done, like units that have been produced through conditional zoning and this Comet project and then.
That's a great idea.
Inherently talks about the liability that's generating of our, our incentives that we've done. And then I think to the. What is it like twenty-some acres that will be? Available downtown um. Through, through that process. I mean, in terms of land acquisition downtown, the agreements that we have with the county. Uh, are significant, hugely, hugely significant for this size town. So I think. And, and the other thing about our affordable housing fund is that it's some of the most affordable. But most uh flexible affordable housing money that's available. And so many of those funds are restricted and encumbered in certain ways. Uh, so I think there's a big advantage in not having that in our case. And then if something comes along like a greenway for a project or something, we can do that. Instead of having it be allocated for land acquisition or something more specific because. So much affordable housing funding is specifically allocated or requires certain parameters. And I think having that fund that's. Flexible for what we need to fill in gaps of other affordable housing funding and things like that is really, really valuable. And, and with how fast it's coming in or, or not, um. And what we've already. The, the liability we already have because so much affordable housing is being produced. Uh, I think that's a good point to say we're trying to. You know, like catch up essentially at this point because so much is being produced.
Mm hmm.
By the. The market that we've created. So.
Yeah, the other worry I would have is similar to what a lot of towns did, what eighties and nineties, they went out and bought fifty acres, covered it in industrial park, and then it sat empty for thirty years.
Yeah.
So you certainly don't want to. You know, go out and do a large land grab and then it's it. For a long time. When you could have taken that capital and incentivized affordable housing a different way. But yeah, I think staying flexible is key. But we, we do have a grant program. We're working with the, with Chatham County on, with the school of government, which I believe will help us develop a affordable housing plan. I think is one of the issues that I've seen is. We just say we want more. We don't, we can't actually tell a developer how much we want and in what areas.
Yeah.
And so I think that is going to help us have that document. And I think those are the things that we can include in that.
Maybe you can see quantitative goals.
Yep, exactly.
And when is this uh? Class?
Want to say. We submitted the application. And I think we were accepted and they've created the committee, but it's, it, at the moment, I believe it's all staff. And our staff representative is Teresa Thompson. But I can get a brief on that from her and send it to you. Sorry, we got so much going on, I can't uh. Keep it all straight all the time.
Mr. Bonnet's.
Yeah, I do. I'm, I'm trying to find my notes. Um.
While he's looking, do we have access to? Do we know how many people were here for the tree lighting? We had talked before about being able to ping cell phones and get a count on. How many people were in town in any particular?
That data should be available first one next week. I think it takes two weeks for them to. Hack your phone.
Bigger, wasn't it? Bigger?
Last one was thirty-five hundred people. Maybe it was thirty-five hundred and then it was thirty-three hundred. Um. I don't know. I want to guess or. Twenty-nine hundred. That's my guess. But everybody I've talked to said it's more people than they've seen. Y'all were up top. What y'all think?
I, I was. Not as deep, but maybe wider.
Okay.
I was distracted by Santa. Speaking of, speaking of that, uh. I know that there was a lot of hard work by the welcome center. And I'd love to see some, is there a budget allowed to go to the welcome center?
Budget line item for the welcome center? Not in the current budget. We have money set aside for. I would say in-kind services for those events, police, staff time. Bathrooms, stuff like that. But most of that is in-con.
And what would it uh? Can we talk about the welcome center and how it's, how it's being run right now or what the uh? Or managed, I think is better. It's a private enterprise, is that correct?
I believe it's a nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
Pittsburgh Business Association, I believe.
There's a distinction between Pittsburgh Business Association.
And the welcome center?
The welcome.
Okay.
And I think it's called the Welcome Chatham.
Okay.
Welcome Chatham runs the welcome center, correct? So, okay. Uh, is there a way that uh the town can help with, I mean, it's, it's what we see first or what anybody that doesn't know the town of Pittsburgh sees first. They go there, they go to the welcomes. And well, the welcome center. Sells our town night and day. As uh, I know they, they worked hard on, on the Christmas tree lighting. Is there a way we can, we can help with that? Help them. How can we get some money to, to help the welcome center?
I would think that would be a board decision. Cause that's, then you're providing money to nonprofits, which you, you do in, in a way now, but I think having a. Specific line item to say welcome center, that's, I mean, that's a board directive.
Is that legal? Is that allowable?
I think so.
Don't we have a line item for our special events that we share out the money? Off the board?
Okay.
Should take care of that.
It should. Okay.
So they can apply, you know, anyone really can apply for a special event funding.
Pardon my ignorance. Okay. Wonderful. So I, you know, I saw what they did. My gosh, at the Christmas tree lighting, I was quite impressed.
It was the PVA that did.
PVA? Okay.
Yeah, I think they're coming to talk to y'all at the Monday night. Just to say thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I was, and I'll say Pittsburgh's, Pittsburgh Business Association, because to be honest, I prefer that over PVA. So.
Okay.
But.
Good to know.
Yeah.
PBR.
Somewhat prefer PBR to, but um. Just, just to be clear. We're not proposing a tax rate increase for next year, correct?
Correct.
At this point.
I, I think generally speaking, it's dependent upon the priorities and the goals of the board, what you want to accomplish and how expensive those accomplishments are. But the goal from us, I know at least my goal is rate neutral. So the rate is currently forty-four. So we keep it at forty-four cents. I, I think the expectation is that there would be a thirty percent. Value increase on average. Some will see more, some will see less. Which would. Technically raise the ad valorem taxes thirty percent. But that has been what Pittsburgh has done for, for twelve, thirteen years. Is just keep the same tax rate.
Thirty percent, you said?
That is what our conservative estimate was for uh the um. Financial analysis that you all saw a couple of months ago.
So uh, the trend is obviously going up. Correct? And um. Thank you.
I think the key is if we want to keep the level of service that we're providing at the moment, we've got to be a couple of steps ahead. Otherwise you get behind. And you know, one of the, for the staffing plan, um. One of the towns that we used as a comparable, when I talked to the manager, he laughed and he said, don't use us because we're already eight or nine people behind. And because we've gotten so efficient. Now I'm struggling getting more people. So now we're. The service is starting to struggle or the service provision is starting to, to take a hit. So he was kind of laughing like. Use my number plus not. But, and just. Kind of go ahead and get this out there. Right now I've got five additional employees for next year on my board. So two for police. Two for parks and rec and IT. And that'll likely grow to seven by the time I get the request in.
And I think looking ahead, I, I think, I think this is in the capital plan somewhat, but. Uh, similar to property acquisition or um. Future. Municipal things like town hall or, or others that we might need that don't. May or may not fit into the county uh land that we're, that we're discussing, but um. As, as we all know, you know, land is not getting any cheaper, but we are going to have to do some of those things. Um, another fire station probably or. You know, whatever those are. So.
Our stations should be free, the locations. We're working pretty hard on that.
And what is the, what's the status of our shuttle and trolley? Shuttle, trolley, whatever.
Question.
Or maybe more simply, do we need money in the budget for that?
If we do, we'll probably program it under Main Street. So it'll, it'll just be an operation expense, not a capital expense. Uh, but we are working to try to make sure we uh secure those funds through advertising on the wraps of the buses themselves. Uh, we've got some partners that are interested in the shuttle. And so those interested partners, quite frankly, should help carry the load. So uh Teresa and Danielle um are starting to have those conversations. But the expectation is the money will be in hand in January with the shuttle service going active sometime in the spring. And we've reached out to all the HOAs. They all have agreed. In. Called. To have a stop at some of the neighborhoods. So. So far, all positive movement.
So um additional uh priorities of concern to me, uh. I don't think that would be very expensive, but I would very much like to see uh something on training. For staff in bias awareness and anti-racism. Feel like uh. I personally feel like that's something that uh. We all need more of. So. And I pursue it myself under my work plan at, at my day job. Managed to find some free offerings through NC State University. I don't know if those could be made available to staff or not. It might be a bu- budget consideration. Mr. Pamela, do you remember when it was that uh staff, excuse me, board last participated in or trainings?
Uh, actually didn't.
Want to say it was twenty seventeen or?
Cause I participated this past summer.
But last time we participated, I think was.
It's been a while.
Twenty sixteen.
It may have been twenty sixteen.
So we've done it before. And I don't recall, was that through a grant or did the town actually invest some funds?
I don't think it was a grant. I think the town must have invested that, but it wasn't a grant.
Mm hmm. Think uh yourself, myself. Uh, Mayor Perry. And Mr. Grusbeck, maybe some others were involved.
Uh, we had one of the classes onsite.
I think it was onsite.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been such a long time.
But Heather, I think Heather is planning on, sorry, Jennifer is planning on some training in that realm uh for next year. Cause I want to say. It was part of her uh evaluation goals for next year.
Wonderful.
I think it's thirty-minute training for each employee.
And um. I continue to, to uh be interested in, in seeing any uh. Capital investments that we can make or budget allocations that we can make that help us leverage additional grant funds. For cleaner energy, cleaner transportation. And uh. Franklin, I think you'd mentioned. The idea of some charging infrastructure at the current town hall in some kind of. Lease agreement. With our current landlord. And I'm aware of a grant source that's coming. Available soon that. Requires. Twenty-five percent cost share. Cool. So um.
That for level two?
Yeah, cool. DC Fast also, if we can figure it out.
I know we're still working with the county on their program to get a couple installed at uh the pop-up park and possibly. Kent's still working on something for Main Street Station.
Oh, cool.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know why I'm having such a hard time finding my notes, but I, I. Do have notes prepared and that's all I can remember off the top of my head. So I'm gonna. Say that that's my first bite of the apple. Plan to come back for more bites.
There's, there's other meetings, other activities.
I, I, I will express support uh for Commissioner Vos's suggestion of public art and speed bumps uh for that.
Oakwood.
Oakwood, thank you.
Are they still have that same situation, that speeding situation on Oakwood?
Yeah.
Do you have a question about, uh, you were talking about the shuttles and the trolley system? So basically, are you thinking about getting Chatham Transit to drive those?
Yes, ma'am.
And to purchase trolleys?
So they will use, they were the, actually the applicant for the C-MAT grants for uh a hundred and seventy thousand, I think one forty of that was grants. And then the rest is match for. But we said we would partner and figure out where that match comes from. Uh, and that should cover us for two years, two, two buses. The existing buses they have with existing staff that they have. And we've got the uh. The stops already pretty much planned, the routes are almost pretty much planned. And then she's just waiting for the, the funding to be handed over. And then they're going to do some, uh, some dry runs to try to figure out, make sure the timing is right. But whatever the route is, you got to make sure that if you say you're going to be here there every hour on the hour, you're there every hour on the hour. Uh. Otherwise people won't use it. But we are going to wrap them. So. Advertise and try to make them look a little cooler than what they. And they'll be free.
Yes. Wow, that's great.
And I do agree with what Commissioner Bonnet's was saying about the clean energy. I would see if we can find some grants for that for sure.
Are we interested? What, what's our interest there um? Specifically? So is it focusing on like what we're doing with buildings? Electric cars, hybrids? What, what's our, what's our main focus point? I was just saying, you know, green energy initiatives. I mean, it's a pretty big umbrella. Are there's any, are there anything specifically we can aim at?
I'm thinking buildings.
Yeah.
As well as the um. Electric cars or hybrids.
So the thing that jumps out at me is that if we're uh looking at planning a new fire station, um. Having ground source as the. Exchange medium for both heating and cooling. Is very affordable. It's more capital intensive. It's a higher capital cost upfront because you've got to either drill or lay the pipe in the ground. But uh dramatically lowers the cost of both heating and cooling. Over time. And it would be a big space and we'd want to condition all space, I would imagine. So um. That's an easy win. And uh.
Geo thermal.
Yeah, or ground source. Um, it's just that heat pumps themselves have improved so dramatically in efficiency. But if you couple those with consistent. Bank of thermal energy, which is ground temperature fifty-five degrees. It's so much more efficient than when you're running that air-to-air heat exchanger at thirty degrees or or lower even. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, it was on the Public Works Building. I think we are going to spend the extra twelve, twenty thousand dollars to insulate the roof, I believe. Or some section of it that the, the guy was telling us about that he said over seven years it'll pay for itself in your, in your utility cost. And then in the winter and the summer, and you can actually heat and cool your bays. So you can do work inside and you're not outside roasting or freezing.
And of course, uh affordable housing is always one of the main priorities for me. And I know that can be difficult to have affordable housing because of cost and, you know, the cost of building, the cost of land. So it, but I still want that as one of the major priorities.
Yeah, I think that goes without saying in Pittsburgh.
It does.
Part of every discussion. I think other communities probably have heard what we're doing and, and certainly ask why and how. Cause if you get seven and a half, ten percent, that's our neighbors to the north, I think, at an occasion have gotten fifteen percent. But their route that they use, they are doing away with from my understanding. So I think the route that we're taking is the safest legally and is producing the most, at least on paper. But you know, once sewer's in the ground, I think we'll see that change in terms of paper versus reality.
There's a lot going on. Lot in our way.
Any updates on that um White Floyd line sap or the timeline?
The timeline has not changed for many months. So Kent feels very positive that the timeline has not changed.
I mean, it's not incrementing down at all?
It means it's not getting further out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Many months meaning since they told us to go to thirty, twenty-four, thirty-six inches?
It's been several months since the timeline within, the timeline has stayed the exact same. Because in, in the past, every couple of months, the timeline kept shifting. It would move too much closer and the timeline would move three months further away. But the last couple of months, the timeline has not changed. So we feel we're positive.
We don't know where that uh change stands in its approval or review at, at DEQ.
Think it's going to be fine, it's what they wanted to do. And we'll know that January. Kent said he felt good. I didn't dive that much into it. Cause if Kent feels good about it, I feel good about it, but. And he would have been here, but he was under the weather. So we gave him a night off.
Yeah, I heard something's going around. Is there a diameter agreement for the sewer pipe?
On the size, I'm not sure. I, I think that the last I heard it was they're bumping up to thirty-six.
That was what they were going back with state with.
Not twenty-four.
I'll see to check and let you know a hundred percent. But I think it was thirty-six, yep.
I think the last time you put it in, in your report, it was twenty-four or thirty-six. There is a uh, there is a great, great difference between twelve inch and thirty-six inches.
About twenty-four inches.
Yes. It's a nonlinear relationship. Definitely a, uh how does that affect of the diameter? Uh let's talk about that. Let's, let's talk about the diameter of the sewer pipe carrying sewer sewage down to Sanford. The larger the diameter, obviously the greater amount of development. That can be a lot of, correct? So we're, wh- what we're seeing then is a great change in the face of Pittsburgh because of the size of the pipe. Is that a, a good assumption?
Depends, because you need the water line for the inter basin transfer to balance.
Right.
Without that, you're still limited in how much sewer you can send to San.
So are you saying that there's a governor, the water will be the governor, so tampering down the growth?
Certainly.
And, and I would say too that we would want planning and zoning to be the governor, so to speak. Uh and have things like utilities be available for projects that we want to do. Um or, or not be, I, I guess, but um I think for quite a while Pittsburgh has been constrained and restricted by sewer, obviously. Eh, eh, but that affects uh all development, a restaurant downtown and, and everything else. And so um I think that having those utilities available and then using planning zoning to get the type of development and growth that we would want in Pittsburgh is the right method. Versus outside forces controlled uh growth or restraining.
That's a great philosophy. I like it. Thank you.
For as long as the General Assembly gives us the right to have planning and zoning, but
Yes.
Since they keep chipping away at that at every turn.
Well, the consensus is that we gave away the farm and that we are reliant on Tri- River to grow now. That is all that was said at the meeting, was it Tuesday night?
What Tuesday night?
Uh the Downtown Advisory Board meeting.
Oh, really?
Hammered repeatedly about it and just didn't feel like arguing with that person. Sorry, I wasn't there for that.
Yeah, me too.
I think you all made the move to help growth and the community
Me too.
without saddling the individual rate payer with a four hundred dollar utility. Or four hundred years of water and sewer bill.
Yeah, I mean, I said that, but.
You just needed to be helped.
Let me know who that was.
Okay.
All right, any other budget items? Jonathan?
Thank you, sir. Uh I sent a list of priorities um previously. Night Farm revisioning, Robeson Creek, uh Park Development, East Street Fire Station, Downtown Streetscape Project, Pulvert Repair. Uh bathrooms at McClanahan, Rock Ridge and Town Lake, uh Moniqueira Pittsburgh Road Park and Police Station. Those are kind of your really big projects in the next five years. And a lot of money. So if between now and a couple of months, if, if you all would think about those projects and kind of put those in a list of what's your number one, what's your number ten, that'd be really great. Um I don't want to hash that out right now because we're, we're probably still a year away from really needing to know that information. But that would help me a lot as we, as we plan and budget. Cause if, if I know one of these items that's coming in twenty twenty-seven is your number one, then that's, then I'm probably going to spend less on other projects between now and then, uh to allocate for that. Uh but I'll shoot out that list again. Uh so you can think about what those, where those lie.
Awesome. Can you kind of go over a little bit on the night farm park upgrades?
Yes, sir. Uh moving the dog park across the parking lot to the green open space. Um activating that, that uh multipurpose field. Uh right now it's just been rough graded with grass on it. So it's not safe for playing organized sports on. Uh an amphitheater in the corner, kind of next to where the, the school is. Sidewalk across that park or that, that, that uh playground, open space, sorry. Basketball court. Uh putting green and an adult fitness cluster.
Putting green is not grass, right?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be artificial.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, I'll be able to walk there. And some of those items I will add, we had talked to some twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen year olds who live in that neighborhood. And trying to provide something for them to do. So the basketball court was kind of a request, putting green. Uh and there'll be some other stuff there.
Any plan on the skate park over there?
Like the way you think.
Night Farm? I, I'm not sure where it would fit unless we didn't do the basketball court. Even then, I don't think that space stays. If you did it over towards where the multipurpose field was, you could do something over there. Uh but we had tried to keep that available for soccer. Would you like to put a skate park over there?
I think it's with the population that's over there and I see a lot of kids over there in that neighborhood and I think it's and I'm not a skater, believe it or not. I'm not, I've hung my skates up for the years. But I think it's going to be a very well-used park. McClanahan's going to be busy and uh it's a lot of kids that uh over there on the window and all down through there, but it's, I know that's expensive. Basketball courts are a little bit reasonable than uh first, you know, to get started.
I have to figure out how we might program something like that into that space the way it's designed. Or if there's another location near there that might work as well. Uh but I'll, we'll keep that in mind.
All for you.
Where am I going to find that?
Uh it, it was in an email a couple of weeks ago, but I'll, I'll, I'm going to reformat it where you can rank it and I'll send it to you. So you can just circle a number.
I missed it. So I guess one last question about budget. That's uh especially timely now. Um and Jonathan, I do see your, your email from uh yes, no, from today uh about Sanford Road. And the uh the very unfortunate death of the pedestrian resulting from a, an accident there. I have seen in, in the budget documents, the lighting line item. And I recall that we made a budget amendment just two, three weeks ago. But I wondered if you might want to speak about that now, not to put you on the spot, but.
Sure. Uh so with the light specifically, Pike Engineering is finalizing design. They'll send that to DOT for um uh oh, what's that called? Um encroachment agreement? We spoke with DOT, Pike had originally said they thought that was going to take six months. So we, we spoke with DOT to make sure that was going to be fast tracked. They said because it's not a major project, it should only take two to three weeks to get through encroachment. So then the only holdup there will be can we get the lights themselves, right? Cause that's, that's been the holdup. Um it's actually getting the, the lights. But I've already called Pike engineering side, their, their installation side and tried to get that, put it on their radar that someone passed and that that project needed to be moved up to the top if they could. So that conversation's been had. Uh Paige Moody um looked at the area today to give us a price of landscaping, because there's some things we can do with landscaping to try to kind of control where people are going and how they cross. Uh our meeting with DOT was um was interesting in terms of the number of options there are, but which options might actually work. So they are going to analyze some of those and see, and those include a four-way stop at Chatham Street. A mid-block crossing, which is very unlikely, but still an option. Um they've got to look at, see what we can actually do with landscaping in that area because it is their road. I asked if it was possible, they just give us that section of road so we could do with it what we would like. I actually think they would do that. Once the fifteen five oh one designation is moved, that actually may be something that you all can request. Uh rapid flashing pedestrian signs, uh I think I got that close, uh putting those at the crosswalks. We've already installed several of those around town. So we, we know those, we know how to install them and we know how much they cost. The fencing barricade option was, was met with, uh they did not like that idea. Because it, it, it's too dangerous if someone does get out on the street and they have nowhere to go and might create more of a, a hazard. Chatham County's on board to try to help. So cause any landscaping changes will likely be on their property.
This is terrific. This is all really good here.
I'm pretty happy with the progress in a week, but we'll see what we hear from DOT.
Yeah, it seems like a significant change in, in attitude, perhaps it's different people we're speaking with at DOT, but in the past, I recall hearing no to the idea of a flashing uh signalized crossing, pedestrian crossing.
We have simply provided them uh examples of these types of options elsewhere in the state.
Great, it's great work.
And I think Shorty's working on some, some policing ideas as well, so.
Thank you, Shorty.
We'll get there.
Like that four-way stop. I think those are terrible.
It is.
They are really terrible.
It's not the best idea.
But I do appreciate you all looking into all the other stuff, but
Yeah.
The four-way stops are just
I mean, it's, you throw a bunch of darts at the wall and then you
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
At least they're open to the ideas. That's, that's significant. I was late this evening because for the first time ever, I experienced Pittsburgh traffic jam. And I was ten minutes from Small Street through the circle.
You said first time ever?
Ten minutes.
It's always like that.
Yeah, and, and I guess I've never been stuck in it. I've never had, never had to come through it.
Got a plan for it now.
Got a plan.
You gotta jog over to Salisbury and catch the bike.
Going around the bypass. But yeah.
Yeah, and we're, we're relooking at our STIP and adding some different crossroads to try to solve some of that. I mean, it's, it's many years out, obviously, but we're, we're already looking at some of that stuff. Uh and that's under, I think, Teresa.
Thank you. Appreciate the vision.
All right. Nice call for tonight.
We're good at forty-four cents. That's what I heard.
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely. Pretty neutral.
Good. Let's get out of here.
Suicide.
All right, take a motion to adjourn?